Go ahead and call our meeting to order. Welcome everyone on this cold, wet rainy night. Thanks for coming and being here. Our December tenth, twenty twenty four town council meeting. Call a meeting to order. We begin with our invitation and our pleasure to be here. So I'll ask Mayor Puttkin, Lynn Devaney, if she will, lead us in our prayer.
Everyone, let bow your heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We thank you for today because we know we are in our promise tomorrow. Lord, thank you for your love, your mercy, and your grace. As we continue to ask you for your blessings, we also ask that you help us extend our own love, mercy, and grace to our fellow citizens. Lord, lead us with open minds and hearts. Lord, lead us with strength and knowledge to make the best decisions for Summerfield. Lord, lead us to unite each other and the citizens of Summerfield. Lord, help us to understand that unity is not created by one person, but by all of us working together. Lord, help us to faithfully pray, show love, mercy, and grace to everyone. Help us to remove the "I" and insert "we" as "we" continue to grow into your united town. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you. I ask the chairman of the board to figure out ladies and gentlemen, our pleasure to lead. Our pleasure to lead.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic which is the United States. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Thank you. With our introductions, Mr. Robinson, we have the new Twigg Rollins Town Manager.
Jennifer Kennedy, Fine Hand Office.
John Elliott.
Ian Clay.
Tim Sessors.
Lynn Williams Devaney.
John Henderson.
Jim Hoffman, Town Attorney.
Jeff Bacon Appian, County Clerk.
Thank you. Move on now to item number four, consent agenda approval. Does anyone have any conversation, discussions, or anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I have to wait. I have to. Councilman Robinson, nothing.
We do need to note that, you know, Robinson's not here. That's really all I can say for the moment.
She's on vacation.
Okay, she's on vacation. Thank you. Item number four.
As far as the consent agenda goes, there were a couple of things I saw on there. I think the closed session for June sixth is one of the things we're voting on. Is that correct? June sixth is actually, I think it has Whitaker and Hoffman on there, but I don't believe either were present during that session.
Also got a wrong location on Will.
Is it wrong? Okay, good. So we just need to change those. And Mr. Clark, can you hear all that?
Yep, different locations, Scott and Jim not there. Town Hall?
Oh, yeah, the town hall, yeah. And then the next notes that are labeled June sixth, two thousand twenty four accurately have at the bottom that it's June eleventh, but I don't think the notes actually reflect that. I'm sorry, I don't think the title reflects that it's June eleventh. So we just want to change the date of that closed session. Is that what you all talked about? And then with that said, I wanted to make sure we add one more thing to the agenda. Just there's public comments, remember eight, so I'd like to add eight D, just an opportunity for the town to respond to public comments. It's an opportunity for transparency, so we'll be able to do it. So I just want to make sure it's something we've always had, like to, as far as I know. So I'd like to make sure those are added to it.
Well, we haven't always had that. And you guys discussed it last month in our talk slide, but we're not good.
Well, I move that the agenda be modified as a, as a result.
So is that the second?
Uh, mine, it's the second.
Okay.
Well, do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended? That's really what we need.
And that's what I said, I move, I move to accept the agenda as, as modified, as a form of.
Everyone understand all the amendments? May I hear them again?
Yeah.
All of you. Any further discussion? Do we have a second? Okay. Need further discussion? The example called a question, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And the motion carries. Item number five, announcements.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I have a few announcements. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank staff and the citizens for the tree lighting. That was amazing. All of the citizens that came out, I think they really had a good time. I know the kids did. All the ones that performed and the singers, the dancers, the cheerleaders, the kids up there with Santa and all that, it was great. And staff, you did a marvelous job and it looked amazing. Also, just wanted to let everybody know that council will be in the Stowe Stell Christmas Parade, which is this coming Saturday, December fourteenth, at two o'clock. And I know that's a big event for them. I think that's one of the only showcase events that they do. So just as a neighboring town, I'd like to support them, but I know it's always done for the kids. Last year, they had umbrellas upside down to catch all their candy. And also just put it on your calendar, because twenty twenty five will be here before we can turn around. May sixteenth and seventeenth, that's a Friday and Tuesday, bless you, is Founder's Day. And Founder's Day Committee has met twice, and they're very excited about a lot of new things that they want to do and bring to the table. And so just please mark your calendars for that. Also, if you haven't been to our town website, you can vote on, for a person for the grand marshal for this year's Founder's Day Parade. If you go to news and notices on the website and then click on Founder's Day, or go to the bottom and you'll see where you can vote. The deadline is December twentieth, so that's not this Friday, but the following Friday, because we got to get things going with the committee. But just remember to do that, and you can do it online. And then also, I just wanted to make an announcement about some committee openings. Excuse me. As for the planning board, we have two alternate positions that are open. We have one board of adjustment. There's one on the finance committee, and we have two on the Founder's Day Committee. This is really fun, so you should join that one. The history committee has two openings, and the trails and open space has one opening. So if you're interested in any one of those, you can contact me and I'll get you to the right person, or you can contact, contact Mr. Twigg Rollins and our town manager. Any one of us will be more than willing to help if you have any questions about that. I think that's all.
Any other doubt?
A reminder that the town of Summerfield will be hosting a rabies clinic with Gilbert County Animal Services and Community Center on January eighteenth. Just wanted to remind, is that right, Mr. Bacon?
Yep, January eighteenth, nine o'clock noon. We met with the animal control today. They're excited about this location. They think it's going to work perfect. They have closed places for troubled animals, and it's a drive-through mostly. So nine o'clock noon on the eighteenth.
Here.
Right here.
Any other doubt? Moving on to item five, our emergency service report.
The Summerfield Fire District reported the following for November twenty twenty four, fire related calls thirty-three, EMS related calls sixty-one, other calls thirty-four for a total of a hundred and thirty-eight, a hundred and thirty-eight calls. Eight child safety seats were installed. The Gilbert County Sheriff reported the following for November twenty twenty four, two hundred fifty calls and fifteen case reports.
Great, thank you. Item number seven, our committee reports, minutes, financial reports. Have any committee members here, like to give any reports, anything at all? Any discussion on item number seven from the council?
Just curious, on the financial reports, you might not know this, but I was told at some point we used to get a copy of the check register every month. I don't know if that's, if that's accurate or not. Does anybody know if that's something that we used to be providing to us?
No, but I'm happy to start preparing that for you for the next town meeting.
Maybe we could just look into it to see if that's something that we used to do. If so, yeah, I think that we can do.
I mean, it makes sense to have that, so I'd be happy to make sure it's included in the next one.
Yeah, that'd be great. Just wanted to thank you.
Any other discussion on town activity reports from the council?
Oh, I will say the audit, thanks to tireless efforts of Dana Luther, was submitted by the deadline, and we are working with the auditor to try and make sure that he can be here with us at the next council meeting in January to present his findings on that.
Great, thank you.
And if you have any other questions about the report that is here, just let me know. If I don't know the answer, I'll be happy to do it in detail for you. We appreciate it.
Move on to item number eight, our public comments. Please come up, give us your name and your address, and your three minutes to start, and then you can talk on any topic that you like. First, we have it, Duane Crawford.
Duane Crawford, Level Six, Tennessee Highway one fifty west. Grand Marshal Founder's Day, I nominate Danny Nelson. He's been here engaging the towns since almost the very beginning, not the first day, but close to the first day. Town Hall, his foundation on that. The first fishing in the park kids thing, he came in and cleaned up around the pond because it wasn't going to happen. He came the day before, cleaned up. He always volunteers whenever it's a problem, and I think he'd make a good grand marshal. Reason, the main reason I got it, but actually, that's the main reason, my next reason. New business, ten F, this five oh one C three, had no problem with us engaging, contracting with, entering a joint undertaking agreement with an established nonprofit. We've done that before in the past, but I have a problem if this town is going to get into the business of helping Oregon House form, how to curate a new business. That needs to happen independent of the town. Thank you.
Lexi Klein.
Lexi Klein, seventy-nine sixty-six High School Room. Councilman Hamilton, at the last council meeting, I stood in this very spot to express my concerns and share verbatim statements that came from you, statements made in a public capacity by an elected official accountable to the community. These were words that you both spoke and wrote freely of your own accord. I was shocked and appalled when, instead of engaging with the issues raised or offering clarification, you responded with claims that my words were defamatory and possibly actionable. This reaction does not embody leadership, rather it reveals a profound discomfort with the very foundation of public office accountability. Criticism is part and parcel of representing the people. Everyone sitting up there with you today has dealt with it in some form or fashion during their term. It is the citizen's duty and right to speak up when leaders' actions and words diverge from the best interests of the community. By labeling my comments defamatory, you send a chilling message that citizens who question or criticize might be punished for exercising their rights. This approach is unacceptable. It undermines not just the individual voice it concerns, but the integrity of our entire democratic process. Elected office is not a pedestal that shields you from dissent. It is a position that demands transparency, resilience, and a willingness to face criticism, even harsh criticism, without seeking recourse in threats. If you feel that honest feedback is intolerable, or if you find the basic principle of public scrutiny burdensome, then it may be time for you to reflect on whether this role is truly the right fit for you. The people of Summerfield deserve representatives who listen, respond, and above all, respect their right to question and critique. Our democracy depends on that.
Teresa Perriman.
Teresa Perriman, seven four zero one, Reno, Nevada. I don't even know where to begin on this agenda. One of them is ten F, I'm getting on that, if I, that other one, C three. The first thing I ask is, what's the problem? You know, what are we trying to fix here? Government is not in the business of creating businesses. Don't know if y'all know it, but there's already eighty-eight five oh one C three in Summerfield alone, eighty-eight of them. I don't know why we, the town, is trying to create another one. Why are we trying to cut into private sector businesses? Is this going to be another payroll item? But my main thing is, is it sounds too close, Friends of Summerfield, sounds too close to a previous organization that was called Friends for Summerfield. It's too close to that, and that was another group that was in two thousand and seven. And I'm sorry, but it leaves a bad taste in my mouth. They were doing things that were underhanded and later caught, and I don't want to go into it right now with y'all, y'all need to know, you're welcome to call me. So definitely Friends of Summerfield's too close for that group. And also, just a minute, there's things on here on the proposed event for twenty twenty five. You've got an Easter egg hunt. Why don't we take it away from the fire department and the churches? I mean, they already have lots of churches in this area that do the Easter egg hunts. I'd rather donate my money to them than use my tax dollars, sixteen hundred dollars to buy. You've got a fall festival. I think the Summerfield Markets already had a fall festival, I think, I'm not really sure of that, but. And then you've got a fifteen hundred dollars for back-to-school event for teachers. Is that only going to Summerfield, or is that going to all of Gilbert County? There's a lot more schools in Gilbert County that is financially, could use it better than Summerfield Elementary, or Northwest, or Norwood. And then you don't even have the amount for the dog show. All these are just, as my items for tonight to be discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dick Fuller.
Dick Fuller, great public servant, and inspector of the city. Thanks for giving me three minutes of the week tonight, and I assure you that I don't plan to use it all. And I want to thank each of you for the things you do to make our town a great community of living. While Summerfield existed for many years, officially didn't become a town until about maybe thirty years ago, I don't know the exact date, maybe nineteen ninety-six, and I was already a resident then. In recent years, Summerfield has become a very desirable location for those seeking to escape the city life of Greensboro. And the main reason for that is, these people viewed Summerfield as a very desirable place to live. Part of the reason for that is the volunteers and by bending our citizens that helped make and enrich the, our community, and it has helped a lot of the new residents come to town. And many of our volunteers, we faced, we really, in the last six months, we had a lot of volunteers that helped us deal with some situations that was unexpected, and that's been very helpful to the town and made things a lot smoother than we could have been. I know that council frequently recognizes the contributions of volunteerism in our town, because they have enriched the, our community in many ways. On October fifth, we lost one of our most active volunteers, Trudy Whitaker, very suddenly and unexpectedly, and she did many things to help our community over the many years she lived here. For your consideration, I'd like to propose to you that our council established a lifetime service award to present it periodically to individuals that have helped on a continuous basis to make Summerfield a better place and had made special contributions to our community. And Trudy actually has done this. Unfortunately, she's not with us anymore. This, this award should be based on criteria developed and adopted by the town council, U five oh seven here plus J now. The award, in my opinion, should be just a simple single plaque, plaque that perhaps is designed by one of our many artistic people in our community, and it should be displayed in town, in the town hall. Recipient's name and the date of the award should be engraved on the plaque, and it'd be permanently, and it'd be a permanent record of the history of that person's centralism to our town. I propose that the award be called the Trudy Whitaker Lifetime Service Award to Summerfield, and I further propose that Trudy Whitaker be the first recipient of that award postulatively. I'm, I'm sure, I'm willing to work, I'm sure there are many others who are willing to work to neuter and make this thing happen, and I hope that we people on the council will support that decision. So with that, I'm, my clock hasn't started yet, but I know I haven't used all three minutes. So if anyone has any comments or questions, fire at me.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Fuller.
Is this, is this for that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Is that a majority? Can I then ask you to instruct our new town manager to work on that and get that done?
Yeah, I certainly think that might, we might be bringing that down a little bit, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
That's all the public comments that I have.
Tim, I didn't.
Turn one in that was missed.
I didn't turn one in. I just, I wasn't going to speak, but I just wanted to make a quick comment. I'll read a sheet for you. Don Miguel from thirty-four oh six Winslet Drive. I forgot about, and Duane made a good point about Danny Nelson. I, Danny's forever accountable, gives his heart and soul to this town. He took care of his wife for so many years because she was incapacitated. He did that while also doing so many things for the town, so he was, he was really doing things that he knew his family was first, and then also the town. His volunteerism is just, I'd say outstanding. Danny ran for mayor, you know, so he felt his heart. He, he really wanted to be a big part of Summerfield, and he still is. So I think if you look back on all the years he's been involved in Summerfield, you can, you can, you know, he came here and said what he felt, because he believed in Summerfield the town as a citizen. So I think it's, you can't, even if you disagree with some of his, his way of thinking, that's okay. None of you agree on everything either, and I don't agree with all of you all the time either, with all of you, so that goes both ways, but I think Danny is a good, good candidate for this, and so I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
The added item A B is opportunity for the council or staff to respond to public comments.
Well, I'll go and say, as far as Duane Crawford and Mr. Miguel for talking about Danny Nelson, he is a super, very helpful guy. He was one of the folks that came and helped us volunteer here, so very thankful for him. I can definitely understand people wanting to have him in that spot. This line, again, I understand that you're Councilman John Gobek's daughter. I want to be as respectful as I can. I do feel as though, again, there are elements trying to get into the moral lessons over that Peggy Stokes has, but again, I think town halls would be very helpful to allow us to have a little more discussion back and forth. As far as Ms. Perriman, I understand your concern about some of those things, and Mr. Fuller, that was a, seems a very thoughtful line, yeah.
You swirled?
Yeah, I, for my, from what I understand, she's probably one of the longest, she has been one of the longest-serving folks, isn't she?
Very true.
Any other responses from council or staff? Moving on to item number nine, any old businesses? Anyone have any old business? Moving on to item number ten, new business. Item ten A, twenty twenty-five town meeting, holiday calendars. Mr. Rollins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, board. So the first item is the calendar. We need to adopt an official calendar to put out to the public with sunshine, with y'all's meetings, and holidays calendar. Normally, the one big change I would notate is that in November, the second Tuesday in November is actually Veterans Day, so there is a slight change to the calendar there. So we would need a resolution, Mr. Mayor, to adopt this, so we can formally put it out to the public, put it on our town website. So this would just be the official town meetings and the days that town hall would be closed for holidays.
And I have a comment to that as well. I am proposing that we don't have the July date, as we did not have it last year, and in all the years that I've been on council, we had it met in July, I think except for one year, I think that was my first year. And that would be take off July eighth. That's a period of time when staff can catch up. It's also when we, everybody can go on vacation and they come back refreshed and ready to go. So a little more flexibility in that one. That's one that the, I mean, the staff has not had to prepare.
Mr. Rollins, are you suggesting someone make a motion that we accept this, or do we need to, do we need to deal with these changes independently and vote on those, and then have a motion to vote on the whole calendar, depending how you like to see it?
I think it'd be best to make a motion amending this calendar, omitting the July, if that is the pleasure of the board.
Well, I'll make the motion to. Yeah, so.
Well, I think we, I think as long as everyone's giving it a thumbs up, you know, we can get it amended and then make a motion to accept the whole thing.
Okay.
Is everybody okay with not doing the July eighth meeting?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion on the calendar? Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make, I'll make the motion that we accept the calendar with the, or the change of no meeting on July eighth, and then everybody notes that in November, due to Veterans Day, we will be on Wednesday.
Have a motion, do we have a second? Have a motion as second, further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item B, twenty twenty-five county events calendar, Mr. Rollins.
So in an effort to make sure the public is aware of all the many events that the town puts on, and for y'all to have it on calendars as courtesy, and us to be able to put it on our refrigerators and stuff like that, town staff put together an events calendar for the events for the upcoming year. It's really a courtesy thing, and we just wanted to officially put that out there for you all. Any discussion you may have or changes you may have, but otherwise, we'd like to publish this and get it out there on our town website. We'll be mailing out a newsletter later this year, we'll also include that in that newsletter.
So I would say in this, on this front, unless someone is opposed to it, no motions required, unless someone is opposed to a date, just, you'd be able to go ahead and present it. Is anyone having problems with these dates?
I have some questions. Which of these events, if any, are new for the upcoming year? Which of these events, if any, are new for the upcoming year?
The Easter egg hunt and the fall harvest are the two new events.
The teacher, the back-to-school teacher event.
The back-to-school teacher. I have the events planner here, so I'm looking at her.
So the new events would be the car show, the vintage car show, the back-to-school that was for the teachers, the Easter egg, and also the car festival. Because we didn't want to do a trumper tree because all of the churches are doing trumper trees.
Is the vintage car show part of the touch truck?
Yes.
There's not a doctor, is it, man?
That will be new also, yes, maybe. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, so please begin.
Yeah, I think that's all.
Was this discussed in Bud?
Yes, just like the touch tree and, and the touch truck and the Christmas tree lighting and all the other events.
Is this discussed? All this stuff to within the appropriate budget category?
Yes, sir.
Can I make one comment about the school thing? Being a teacher, I really appreciate that. But that August 3rd date, a lot, there's a lot of families that they're doing their last-minute vacations. So I just don't know about attendance. Just saying. There's one thing you might could look at, the Summerfield Baptist Church, or Baptist Church or Summerfield? Baptist, whichever one.
First Baptist.
Thank you.
Summerfield First Baptist.
Okay, okay. So that church on Skelsel Road, the Baptist Church on Skelsel Road. They always do like a prayer walk, but it, I think it's more in the fall. I can't remember if it's right before.
It's going to start today. It's the same week of Founder's Day. I think that's off that week.
Is it that week?
Yeah, I think it's that week.
Okay. Then what about when they do like popsicles in the park for like the new students at Summerfield? Like around that day or something?
Yeah.
But I guess like the week before school.
That is the week before. That might be a better, yeah, I don't, I can, that's a great idea. I can find out from our PTA. But definitely, you're going to get more teachers' families a week before school rather than that first weekend in August. A lot of people.
Two questions on that.
Yes, sir.
One, since we're possibly unsure, they, could we make that TBA just like the summer shred date?
That's fine, mate.
Yes, sir.
And two, the back-to-school event for the teachers, what, what's the goal? What, is it some type of fundraising? Is it, it would be something like with school supplies? What is, what's our goal there?
The goal for that was to help a lot of the teachers create a spot out for the students. Because you know, sometimes some students come to school and they don't have all of their supplies. So a lot of the teachers have to go to a warehouse to pick up supplies. So that would, I was just thinking that would help some of the teachers because there's always the back-to-school drives for the students.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? So with that one change, is anyone else comfortable with the calendar? Okay, thanks, sir. Item 10C, 2025-26 budget development calendar. Mr. Robinson.
Yes, sir. So the budget calendar comes through, Madam Finance Officer. I can't keep up. The budget process, I anticipate, because we have a new finance officer, because we have new staff, we have new department heads, is going to take longer. And so this is a proposed calendar for you all to consider adopting these dates. You don't have to adopt them, but put them in your, in your personal calendar so you're available. And I'll just kind of go through these because it does concern the public too. Adoption of the public calendar will be tonight. Department heads present their budgets to Budget Committee, which effectively is going to be the finance officer and me. And I'm going to ask a couple commissioners to sit in on that just to hear the department heads what things they want for their departments in the coming year. And then on the 11th, I know y'all already have this on your calendar. We have our planning budget retreat already scheduled that Saturday. And then on the February the 11th, would be a public hearing for the public to come in and tell you what they want in their 25-26 budget. And then a budget workshop on February the 18th to talk about that. Then you'll have the department heads, the budget committee, your own personal and the public's and start talking about which ones you want myself and the finance officer to try to put a budget around for the year. And that's going to give us a couple of months to work on it. And then the formal presentation by myself, the budget officer, on May the 13th. Then give a couple of weeks for y'all to digest that. If you so desire to have a budget workshop on May the 27th to fine-tune things, if you're ready to move forward, then we could schedule the public hearing at that time on June the 10th, an adoption. That also, just by state statute, you have to have it adopted by June 30th. So that gives you a little bit of leeway if there's some things that y'all want to fine-tune, massage. So I'm trying to build in plenty of time and give you some dates locked on the calendar for that. So that is my recommendation for y'all to consider adopting. That way the public gets input, y'all get input, and you got plenty of time to digest it, plenty of time to ask questions and for us to do research. Because it's just not a one-and-done, present the budget to y'all and y'all going to rubber stamp it.
May I make a comment, please?
Sure.
So we had talked about as a council in 2025, trying to just do workshops. And we threw in some dates out. I think this is the fourth Tuesday of the month, if I have that right. And so one of those was May 27th. So instead of just doing other business, we, if we chose, we could just work on the budget that night. And that's fine. We don't have to designate.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor pro Tim, basically a workshop, y'all can work on anything you want to dive deeper into. So you don't have to stick to a certain thing. But I would lock this date away. I would recommend you lock this date away. Because I'm going to give you the budget on the 13th. Y'all are going to pick that three-ring binder and go back. And mark it all up like you normally do with your, with your agenda. But in more detail, we'll have questions, and that's for us to get down and, get down and dirty and answer questions and, and stuff for y'all.
Any other discussion? Do we need a formal adoption of this, or we just do it on that?
I don't need a formal adoption, Mr. Mayor. If y'all are good with it, I just ask you to put it in your personal calendars and lock these dates away. I'm trying to give you as much good planning as we can for the future. If it doesn't fit the balance of your work life.
Please, Mr. Mayor, please, will you post it?
Yes, sir. We will post them on the public website, on our website, on our Facebook.
Item D, Founder's Day fireworks contract approval. Mr. Robinson, Mr. Bailey.
So the Founder's Day Committee has met a couple of times, as the Madam Mayor pro Tim has said. And one of the things that the committee is, is wanting to do is add fireworks to this year. And so there was a con, there was contact made by the staff of a fireworks company. We got a price. We took it before the Founder's Day Committee. They voted in favor of moving forward with this and the price. So we got a formal contract. In your consideration tonight, gives that contract. In order to lock in the date, we need to go ahead and approve this contract with the fireworks vendor in order to get them. It's a very busy time of year, the time that we have the Founder's Day Festival. And these were, this was the least expect, least expensive. We got three folks. One of those $20,000. We did consider where to have it. And the athletic park is the best place, the safest place. We have to have a certain range of having distance in fireworks to where the nearest public is. And also our insurance does cover it under, under our liability policy. So what's in front of you is consideration for approval of this contract to add another special thing to the Founder's Day. It'd be on Saturday night at 9:00 or close to that, soon as it's dark. And I might add, we're, the Founder's Day also approved, committee approved, to look at getting a band for that night that would be down at the athletic park. So the band would be first, sort of like a music in the park, we're just transferring locations for that one night. So the events of Founder's Day will be over about 4:00, 5:00 o'clock. The band, we think, will start about 7:00, play for two hours, and then the fireworks.
Okay? Crawford.
Have we done enough, do we have enough knowledge or have we done enough homework to have a reasonable high degree of competence or will be any conflicts with the Fire Marshal or anything like that? I don't know what's involved in fireworks. It's like something regular with that.
Mr. Crawford is correct. It does require a permit from the Fire Marshal's office, and part of this contract does address that, that they will get their fire permit and make sure they're in compliance with all state and local regulations.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion from the council?
And you said liability insurance coverage, huh?
Yes, sir.
That's all my first question then.
In addition to that, I just wanted to ask one question, and I know it's not in tonight, that we wrote the R and K, the ride vendor, we're going to need a lot been into, so that'd be in January.
Soon as we can get a contract from the amusement vendor, yes, ma'am.
So this was put out for bid?
It wasn't a bid. It was quoted. We were under the $30,000. You have to put it out for bid when you're $30,000, or you anticipate the price is going to be over $30,000. We did, we complied with the town's purchasing policy, which is to get three folks for anything over $1,000.
And the agreement says there will not be any penalties if customers ship either, or both show, who could cancel due to income level?
Unfortunately, that's the way fireworks vendors work.
But it says two shows. You said one.
He's not supposed to do one show.
It says two. The other, the other concern I have is that didn't there horse farm right on the other side of the woods, in front of the park? And I'm worried about that. I'm worried about, there was a turkey shoot not far from there. They got shut down because of noise. Dogs, 50% of all dogs are terrified of fireworks. And also the, because I thought about Trudy, because the wild animals, a lot of them abandon their nests and stuff and don't come back. Being a rural, being a rural community, while I, I love fireworks myself, I have to worry about the animals and the farmers and things that nature around. And I'm just, I'm not, I'm not comfortable doing this.
Other discussion?
Is it two or just one?
It's just one. That's a typo.
And you mentioned 9:00 on Saturday night. Would, would this additional event take away from the Founder's Day in the downtown area?
No, sir. All the events are over by 4:00 on Saturday, according to everybody sits on the committee. Who's been here many years prior to this.
Any other discussion?
Is there, I wonder if there's a way we could talk to that, the owners of that farm?
Right, right beyond that is another California. Truman Bellis Calendar is really close to that as well. Down on Winkie Road, which isn't far at all. And they're running 100 or 200 head. And then just beyond that is actually our farm. So we've got, you know, not nearly that number, but we've got horses and cows. And on a good day, we can hear the ball field from our house to people playing, so.
Yeah, yeah. The fireworks, everybody, we, we get people here, vote for, putting things through people's yards or at least the right way, or something like that, for, for high-density, and lots of things like that. I think for the fireworks, it could be a fun thing, stand by, tell me for a little bit of time. Kind of like that idea.
Mr. Crawford, do you have any thoughts?
I wouldn't raise it. It was the 50 acres, this park was a concern in discussion. It was a potential venue. The what? The park. I got 50 acres.
This park?
Yes. Yeah, the, yes.
That was, this, this particular park was not brought up at the Founder's Day committee meeting. They talked about the ball fields at the schools, but they weren't sure because then you have to get government county schools involved and all that. And I thought we'll never follow that to deal with.
It's probably nothing, but I thought, I've been to, I've been to one of the times, watched fireworks overall. And there's nothing like watching both. They, fireworks go in both directions if you get in the mirror.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. I agree with you. Thank you.
Does this, does this need a vote, or is this a consensus? Or is this part of the council's budget?
This wouldn't need a vote because the town is contracting with this vendor. Any contracts that are signed by the town have to be authorized by this council first.
And when do you need this? Probably need this tonight?
Unfortunately, we need it tonight in order to lock in the budget.
And then this half hour, something like that?
About 15 minutes, 15 to 20 minutes.
So it would only be like 15 minutes?
I know, I know that there's a horse form right behind it, I knew.
And would this be at the end of the ball field or possibly where the, where the shooting might, yeah?
We hadn't talked about that. I mean, certainly we could work with the vendor to ask him if he could do it upfront. But he's going to keep safety in mind first and foremost.
Any other discussion or would someone like to make a motion?
He's sitting there thinking hard.
Is it a project that we've gotten, ever done it?
We haven't. It's been talked about for many years in the Founder's Day committee. But we just haven't done it in the past. It hasn't been like thawed out in layers, I'll say, because the price was at 10 grand. And, and so that, the money situation filled it. Whereas now, the guy that's willing to do it, he actually like teaches workshops. He trains people on how to do this as a business. And his price was at 5,500, I believe. And so we felt like, we, the committee felt like all, all of that was, was working. He was going to do all the permitting. He was going to be in charge. He does this as a business. He knows how to set it up with, you know, he knows all the details. We felt like it was a great fit, and that's why the committee wanted to move forward with it, but.
Is everyone on the Founder's Day committee in favor of this?
Yes.
Any further discussion or would someone like to make a motion?
Can I, sorry, Tim, can I say something? I don't know if anybody's.
Go ahead, I got it.
Okay.
So I, I know I was in the meeting. I just thought of something when you brought up the animal thing. There's a protected seahawk that lives on top of lights down there on SAP 3. Now, this is back from Jeff Gordon time when I was with SRA. The bird moved in, brought a lot of sticks with it, built a gigantic nest up there, made a ton of noise. I talked to Jeff about it. I want to understand. Jeff contacted Division of Wildlife. They said there's a tracker on that bird. It is protected. And then he informed us if anybody with SRA harassed, intimidated, or bothered the bird that they would shut the park down. The bird came back this past season. I know we didn't discuss that at the, at the meeting. When Mr. Crawford brought it up, it now hit me that there is a protected bird that lives on top of the light on the, I guess it'd be the third base side of SAP 3. I almost feel like people should go to, to the, to the baseball diamond in Greensboro and watch the fireworks. The question I would like to have, and I'm very good, I'm a little concerned about it.
But they're out for you, but they're wild.
And so, Mr. Robinson, if we, if we put this off to anywhere, there's no way that you'd be. And so, Mr. Ross, if we, if we put this off to anywhere, there's no way that we'd be able to okay it then if we were looking at some of these things for now and then. I like this a lot, I just thought it'd be.
We can put it off, Council of Hamilton, but, and I'm not trying to be pushy. We may, we may lose the date.
Gotcha.
So that, that's the connotation of it.
Because I guess there won't be trying to build dates.
It, it might, it might be, we're just being a little cautious.
The only good thing is it's doubtful somebody's going to come along and want to book them for May the seventeenth. It's not like July the fourth or some other day, so, I mean, that may run risks.
Whatever the pleasure, we'll do it.
Looking at, see if putting these off violates anything, yeah. Those are not trying to, trying to harass, intimidating.
Yeah, I'll call Division of Wildlife tomorrow and see if I can verify, I guess, the rumors I've heard from the past.
Yeah, that'd be good, because that, you know, act on just things we've heard, right? Kind of that, verify a little bit, that sounds good.
Yes, sir. Okay, thanks, look.
I appreciate it.
So I'll ask one more time to make sure, and then we'll move on to the next item. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion on item N D?
We didn't make a motion to table it.
Didn't need to be tabled, I mean, if you come back up. Item N E voluntary annexation forms and process, Mr. Ross.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. So we have some property owners who have expressed interest in what the process is for voluntary annexation into the town. We found out that we did not have any updated forms. And so what this is, is basically the forms that somebody who wanted to be voluntarily annexed into the town would fill out for y'all's consideration and the process for those. This has been vetted by our current planner and in focus planning, and is compliant with North Carolina general statutes and our own ordinances. So it's, what we're asking for is adoption of this annexation petition paperwork and process so that we can get it out to the public. And I believe Madam Mayor Pro Tim has some personal knowledge of some people that are interested in moving forward fairly quickly with this.
Thanks, sir. Any discussion of the documents, or do you want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve this document to go into our policies. Is that the right word?
Just that we adopted the forms.
Just adopt the forms.
The forms and process.
Okay, have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, second, further discussion. And again, we'll call a question, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and the motion carries. Item N F five oh one C three, organization friends of Summerfield, assistance, Mr. Ross.
I know this is a hot topic, so please bear with me. So it was discovered that during Founder's Day committee meetings that there are individuals who would like to donate money to certain things in town, but they don't have a vehicle for doing that and still get the tax deduction. So one of the things that was brought up was, could a five oh one C three be formed? We're not forming ones of the town. Let me say that again, we are not forming ones of the town, but that one could be formed, and the town board would support that form of something, something to the effect of possibly the friends of Summerfield. The purpose of it would be able to take money, again, so somebody can get a tax deduction that would go to the benefit of the citizens of Summerfield. Some of the ideas were, if you wanted to donate money to have a park bench in honor of one of your loved ones at one of our parks, or you wanted to sponsor, say, a band or something. And so all this was, was to get y'all's support, that you would support somebody wanting a group of individuals doing that. They would set up their own bylaws, they would set up their own policies and procedures and stuff. And we could just, if somebody came in and says, hey, I want to donate money for a bench at the park, we can say, go see this five oh one C three, this is in their wheelhouse.
Mr. Ross, this is independent of the town?
Absolutely.
Not sponsored by the town?
One thousand percent independent. We have no say so over what they do with their money, how they do with their money or anything.
Yes, and I don't, I don't.
So there's really nothing for us to do?
Personally, yeah, I don't, if this, if such group existed and want to come and avail themselves to being willing to do that, I think then it would be an excellent item for us to, to consider. And, and really, not even then, because it's totally outside the realm of anything that we would do or touch. And, you know, to Ms. Perry Manger's point, if eighty-eight of these type organizations already exist in Summerfield, there may already be one of those that if someone wanted to make a donation, they could make it through that group, and it'd be a gift to the town. And I think we'd say, okay, unless there was some insurance or some exposure, otherwise it wouldn't be exposed to. So, I mean, it's certainly a very worthy cause, but I, I think we, I think our action item on that would be consideration of acceptance of such gifts. And outside of that, you know, any group of people could do any five oh one C three that they want to do. That's just my opinion.
Are you the mayor, please, and it's, can you comment on anything the mayor just shared?
I think the mayor's one hundred percent correct. I mean, one is, is we don't need to blur the lines between government and five oh one C three.
Amen.
And if there are eighty-eight out there, maybe we can find one that, that is willing to.
Yeah, we started taking votes on, yeah, we'll support them. Even if we sit back here and nod our heads, yeah, we'll support them, then you're definitely showing favoritism. And, you know, then that starts, and then there's the next thing that starts, so.
Well, I mean, but, you know, you bring it up sometimes, I did, and just encourage folks to look for them. No line specific, like the mayor said, but just if they want, yeah, to look for those sort of organizations.
Yeah, it's just going to be on the person who donates to do their due diligence, that they can earmark the money to go to something they want it to go to. We will, we as a town can accept a donation, and, you know, from a business, they can do a business write-off. An individual, if they give it to the town, they don't get the tax deduction. So we just need to point them to one of these eighty-eight five oh one C threes.
So you're, you're saying, and I'm trying to understand what you do, so you're saying that, you know, somebody wants to make sure it's earmarked, that money goes to a particular spot that those folks will know. So I don't, I don't know if we're able to do some sort of, you know, more educational page or something where, but we can construct. Not, not a particular place, but maybe, I'm not sure.
Okay, so I have question comment. I have, I know that prior to my time being on council, somebody made a donation for a town clock.
It's two hundred dollars, and it's been in the bank for since two thousand and four or five.
There you go, okay.
The city.
No, no, it got loaned. It got loaned.
It's, it, it's, so far as I know, the last time I saw it, it's still sitting there as a town clock when we were thinking about doing a town hall, because we were going to utilize the town clock with the town hall. But anyway, um, so if that happened, had the laws changed? Because at that time was, I, I assume that individual got a tax write-off.
No, they didn't.
They didn't?
No.
An individual cannot get a tax write-off by donating something to a local government. That's the whole reason they would want to give it to a five oh one C three, because then they would take it as an individual. A business can donate to a town and count it as a business expense. But in this case, to Mr. Dogger's point, that money's sitting there to this day, and the only thing it can be used for is a town clock. And if we never do a town clock, it just sits there and sits there and sits there.
And it's the family that donated the town hall. They should donate a couple of them.
Mr. Ross, I like the idea of a five oh one C three organization for the benefit and benefit of, of our town. And I, what I'm hearing, and I agree, it should be totally independent of our local government, our town.